Good morning. It is nine o'clock. This is a special meeting of Commissioners' Court of Grimes County. Today is Wednesday, the 19th of December. The time is 9:00 a.m. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll ask Gary Williamson, if you will, to lead the invocation. And then we'll have the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Gary?
That's right. Heavenly Father, as we begin the New Year Day or a new day, shine your light into our hearts and lives today. Help us to reflect your light so that someone who doesn't know you as Lord and Savior may be directed to you. Help us to be stronger because of your forgiveness, happier because of your mercy, and more willing to serve you because of your love. Today, hold our hands and guide us every step of the way. For though we do not know what the future holds, we do know who holds the future. And, Lord, please look after our first responders and our armed forces personnel. This is in Jesus' name.
Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Would you recede, please? We'll go right into public comments, Agenda Item Number Two. If you have a comment, would you please come to the podium, identify yourself, and we would ask you to limit your comments up to about two minutes, please. Just form a line.
I have a public comment. The Grimes County Animal Rescue has hired Lori Tolliver as a consultant on a contractual basis to help plan and hire an architect to move forward with the animal shelter. We'll have more announcements coming forward in the next several weeks.
Who's the individual you all have identified?
Lori Tolliver, who was the person who was over at Navasota Animal Shelter for several years.
Ah, okay. The name is familiar. Okay. Thank you.
She has a wealth of knowledge in taking in animals, adopting them, fundraising, and so forth. I think she's gonna be a great asset to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other additional public comments?
Nobody else has any. I have another one.
Go ahead.
I attended the festival in Anderson this weekend, and they had a tremendous crowd here, a lot of booths.
A lot of booze?
A lot of booths.
Oh, booths. Okay.
Booze, too.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to clarify that for the viewing audience.
It was a very good turnout. I was amazed at the amount of vendors they had for the booths that they did have. And we did have several of the businesses there on Main Street. Part of the old courthouse was open as a business now.
Okay. Good. You know what the crowd size was?
I don't, but I think it was pretty good turnout.
They said it was over 2,000.
Over 2,000?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Are there any other public comments? I have one. I'd just like to throw out a word of caution to all of our citizens. Through this holiday period, we've had fog yesterday, we've had slick roads with rain today. Fortunately, the forecast doesn't cause for any freezing temperatures through the Christmas time, but would ask that everybody drive with caution, put a little patience in your pocket as you leave. Another minute or two is not gonna hurt your delay or your arrival, but unthought-out actions could keep you from arriving at all or others. So just countywide, statewide, please be patient, remember what this season is all about, and think of others and think of yourselves and your families. Last call for public comments. Are there any others? We then shall move on to Consent Agenda Items Number Three and Number Four. Agenda Item Number Three, Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. Agenda Item Number Four, Approve Monthly Reports Submitted by the County Treasurer for November 2018 and Authorized Advertisement of Affidavit of Same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. And you can see Page Three of this agenda.
I did have a question, Mary. Have we hired a court reporter yet for the county court at law? We haven't gotten him yet.
No, they can't actually hire somebody and have them start until January 1st.
Until January 1st. Okay. Thank you.
And the other issue with that, Commissioner, is those that have considered the position, what we're offering, are not coming close to what their financial requirements are. So we'll have to take a look at that monster when it comes before us, but it is gonna be an issue, it seems like. Did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Three and Four.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Mallett. There's a second by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Five, IT Director Greg Cannon. Consider and take action to approve IT's recommendation for three new policies and standards for the county. The Grimes County Acceptable Use Policy, Grimes County Email Policy, and the Grimes County Data Protection Standard will replace Page 36, Computer and Internet Usage and the Personnel Policy. See Attachment Number Six. Mr. Cannon, would you identify yourself for the court proceeding?
My name is Greg Cannon. I'm the Director of IT for Grimes County, and I'm appearing before the court today as mentioned by the judge for approval and implementation of the Grimes County Acceptable Use Policy, Email Policy, and the Data Protection Standard.
I did have a question, Mr. Cannon. On your IT Acceptable Usage Policy, under Number Four, the third one, the last paragraph about employees are responsible. Can you... There's something in there. I have a question mark there. In that such policy is employees.
You said Section Four?
Individual departments are responsible.
What page number are you on, sir?
I'm on Page Four, and the policy is four of your IT usage. Do... I guess my question is, do individuals, departments have policies?
Not that I know of.
Or guidelines?
I know that... And I'll give you a little brief history. I've taken this policy, when I used it in the public sector, and have tried to streamline it to the county. It'll probably be an evolving policy. There'll probably have to be changes, me not knowing the full functions of each of the departments in the county. There may be some departments that have a little more leeway or have a little bit different variation on the policy. For instance, the criminal investigators in the Sheriff's Department, their policy may be different because of the type of websites and things that they go through that require to do that. So I guess to your question, you're talking about policy number four on Page Four, Item So if there is a department, like in the Sheriff's Department, where they have to visit certain sites and do certain things that would fall way out of the norm of a standard policy for the county, we may have to make adjustments or may have to be an addendum added to this, or it's understood that there is a specific policy within that department that the guidelines will take into account for that.
So if the Commissioners' Court does approve this policy, and an elected official or department head chooses not to follow this policy, either they have one of their own, or they just don't have one, do we have any mechanism by which we prevent them from having access to our system, since we invest so much money in trying to maintain the security and the operational aspect of it?
Yeah. I would feel that any adjustment to the policy or any bypassing of certain sections of this policy because of the departmental requirements would still have to be approved by the Commissioners' Court and would be noted in this policy. If we would make a subtitle to Number Three, Item Number Three, and say, you know, these restrictions, these adjustments or restrictions don't adhere or don't pertain to this particular department.
So what would... This is just a starting point?
Starting point.
And then each individual department will have to review if they want to deviate... If the court approves this policy and they want to deviate from what's actually here, then they will need to get a view and specify and bring it back.
Right. Okay. Yeah. Because, like I said, there's so many things that we don't know. The county's never had an in-depth policy like this. We've had a very generic. And the idea is not to restrict the county employees from doing what they're doing, but to add some level of protection for the citizens, you know, the equipment of their employees.
Have the department heads, our elected officials, had opportunity to review this policy?
I reviewed the policy with Judge John Fultz, reviewed the policy and made adjustments to it, and I work with Lucy in HR. She's reviewed it as well.
And as we continue to, what I would suggest, I don't know if this is the right terminology, but to upgrade our IT system with software, security, and all of those enhancements to protect our information, what Mr. Cannon is proposing is that we have some consistency of usage and how we're gonna use it throughout the county. And that's not to say any elected official can't modify based on the needs of their department, but I appreciate what Mr. Cannon has put together to, as I say, keep us in that safe mode as we go through our day-to-day business. Because prior to him coming onboard, our system going down, viruses in our system, all of those kinds of things was something that we thought about, we were concerned about, but had no idea to the degree that it was occurring, and it's much improved. So what Greg's trying to do is to make sure those improvements to our security and our data stay intact.
And I want to let the court know, we're not trying to be very restrictive. I'm actually trying to be very lax on the usage of the systems, but I feel we need to have some policy in place that says you can use systems, you can use software purchased by the county in this fashion. And like I said, that'll be an evolving process, my department, by the county. The idea is just set some kind of standard that says if you're gonna use a county computer, this is acceptable use way to use it. You can't be running a business off of it, using the county computer, et cetera. It just sets general guidelines. We'll try not to be restrictive, and like I said, this will be an evolving document over time.
I guess one question I would have also is, if we adopted the policy today, where does that leave the employees in terms of, are you gonna have a workshop to present this policy? Because other than that, there are terms and conditions in here that you're going to hold them to in terms of being terminated or sanctioned, whatever, and maybe they don't know what's in the policy.
So in the past, and I can't speak to Lucy, but in the past, when I worked in the corporate world, when these policies were defined, they were sent out to all the employees, and they had, I believe, seven days to... There was a signature required that says, "I've read, I understand, and I accept and abide by this policy." Any new employees that came on were asked to read the policy, and they agreed to, they signed it as part of their employment. Lucy had mentioned she wanted, if the Commissioners approve this, she was planning on sending it out to all the employees. But as you mentioned, I don't know if you want to have any type of signature acknowledgement that we've got the policy, that we've read it, we've agreed, you know, we'll abide by the policies.
I think that's gonna be important. If you're gonna implement a policy and it says for how you use it, then you need to know that they're aware of or understand it. The other thing I had, I had one other question on your email policy. On Page Four, under Policy Compliance, it says the Grimes County IT Department will verify compliance to this policy through various methods, including but not limited to periodic walkthroughs, video monitoring, business tool reports, internal and external auditing. Do we have video monitoring of offices?
It probably needs to be rephrased, that term. It's not video monitoring, like you think of video camera. It's more of monitoring, like we do with TeamViewer, like we could through TeamViewer.
This system.
Some type of system allows us that if a manager comes to us and says, "We have suspicion that I have an employee that's not adhering to the policy," with their permission, we could get on that computer and see what's going on. I probably need to...
And you can do that remotely, can you not?
Do that remotely. And that's... The only time that would be done would be at a manager's request.
Okay. And that's why I'm saying it's gonna be very important for us to make the employees aware of what's in this policy, if they're gonna be accepting this policy. Because, like you say, our terms are our former or our current policy that go in as depth as this does, and making sure that they understand is, you know, is gonna be valuable to them. So those were the two questions I had about it. I don't... I'll get somebody else.
Nobody's gonna ask, why does he print this in a 10 font versus a 12?
[laughing]
Save paper.
No, it's a very in-depth policy, and I appreciate the fact that we took the time and effort to outline some of the things that could cause potential risk to the county, because we have experienced significant technology problems that you're still probably trying to get some out. But it's not so restrictive that people can't enjoy the use of the technology that we do have to conduct their jobs in an efficient manner. I do have a question, or actually a couple of questions, a question and a point. Can you define for me what a honeypot is?
Honeypots are...
Don't feel bad, I had the same question.
What page are you looking at?
Page Six, on the Acceptable Use Policy.
With IT?
Honeypots are basically like programs or systems that are put in place to help capture certain information, or where they kind of run on their own. They're not a virus, but they're kind of like an information gathering system. It's kind of self-contained within itself.
Okay.
Because in the 1800s, honeypot had a different definition.
Just checking. And then...
You're just in the history books, that's all I can tell you. If you want, look it up. Or Google it. New and old honeypot.
Who's the real honeypot?
Yeah. And so one of the other issues that I wanted to point out, and I think it's gonna be relevant whenever the department heads and elected officials are talking to their employees about this, is that the email system that the county has is subject to any type of public viewing. It also applies if you use the county network and/or a county machine to access your personal email, it is subject to review. So I would recommend, when you're talking to the department heads and elected officials, to emphasize that point, that anything you do on this county equipment is subject to anybody at any time coming in there and looking at it.
Yeah. And we'll be sending out, or I'll be sending out also what the state recommends as far as... I get questions all the time, should I delete email? How long should I hold on to email? Those kind of things. And the state has very complex guidelines for retention of data, depending on what it's used for. I mean, the document is huge, but the general consensus is, if it's business-related, you keep it forever. If it's personal, immediately delete it. And like you said, anything that's done personally on a county computer is subject to subpoena or, you know...
Open records.
Open records, yes. And so the idea is, if it's business-related, keep it forever. If it's junk mail, like you get an ad to Kohl's or JCPenney, where you can delete that kind of stuff, anything that's business-related, you keep for everything that's personal. Do it on a different device or get rid of it.
So with that being said, we have a huge storage closet?
Uh-huh.
It's pretty huge if we're storing forever, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
It can be quite big. In the new system that we're migrating to on email, and the good news is we're making great progress. We've only got... We're about 60% done. We've got about 40% left to do. That system, because we laid the foundation in that, if the county ever says, "We want to record every email message, whether the end user deletes it or not," we can flip that on just with the flip of a switch. It costs $3 per user per month, but if we ever got in a situation where it was mandated, hey, we have to track and keep every record of every email that comes in, no matter what it is, we can flip that on with the switch and have unlimited access to archived email for years and years.
So is $3 per person that's using it?
Yeah. So we're looking at about 150 users today, so about $450 per month is what that would cost to keep our email archived forever. Because, you know, some people say, well, you know, some people might try to hide their tracks. An email comes in, they're doing business, they delete it. Well, with this system, we always have a record that we couldn't ever... There'd be a record of it.
But at the current time, we don't seem to need for that.
And again, just to mention, IT is not here to be the police or try to restrict. We all know that we, you know, there's things that we have to do, you know, whether it's school kid-related, maybe bank-related, there's just things that we have to do on the government computers that I'm not opposed for personal use, because like I said, just 'cause you show up here doesn't mean life stops outside of being here. So there's things that you've gotta do and check on and those kind of things. And my goal is not to be as least restrictive as possible, but yet still protect the company assets, protect the county assets.
Because that's your charge. So would you summarize then for the court, Greg, that if the court did approve this today, then what would be the rollout process and awareness process for the users within the county?
Yeah, I spoke to Lucy briefly. She had mentioned that if the Commissioners did approve these policies, that she would start an action plan to immediately get this information out to each of the employees, and it sounds like we would have each of them sign that they received each of these policies, they've read, and they accept the policies. Because, as the Commissioner mentioned, we need to make sure that all, if they're gonna be judged by, we need to make sure they're all aware of it and understand the implications of it.
And the one thing that I would ask Lucy is that, as you and I have had the conversation, we make a policy revision or a policy addition, that absolutely, we put that date at the bottom of the policy so we know what's old and new, and people go, well, this is what the policy says. And we say, no, we revise that back on 1, 2, 25.
I'll know if you do that.
Okay. All right. And then make that notification information similar to what we already have intact versus the cover sheet that you've displayed for us today. Although this looks nice, but I'm thinking about saving paper so you can increase the With that said, Commissioners, is there any further discussion, or Mr. Cannon, any opinions you'd like to present on these or make us aware of?
No, I apologize, they're so long. I tried to stream it down, slim it down as much as I could, but still retain the heart of what we're trying to do.
You did not have your WordCount monitor on when you wrote these, that's for sure.
Judge, I'll make the motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the IT's recommendation for three new policies and standards for the county. The Grimes County Acceptable Use Policy, Grimes County Email Policy, and the Grimes County Data Protection Standard, which will replace the computer and internet usage in the personnel policy.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say, I appreciate by your questions and your comments that y'all did do a review, even though it was lengthy. With that, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Six, Grimes County Assistant Auditor Jessica Herrera. Consider and Approve Contract with Atkins for Administrative Services for the Grimes County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I will share with Commissioners, the... We already had this on the agenda, but Ms. Herrera and the auditing group did not receive the contract from the vendor in time to get that submitted, but we do, you do have a copy of that, I believe. Do you not?
Yes.
And you do have, I don't know how much time you've had to review it. The question would be, has John C. had time to review it?
I don't know. Let me see if Jessica can get in.
All right. And Mr. Lou?
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of Jessica, because I have background knowledge on both of them.
Sure.
So for Item Six, again, I do not know if the county attorneys had a chance to review it yet. So that's pretty much all I have to offer on that at this point.
Judge, I will say, I have not, I don't have a copy of that.
She sent it...
Looks like this.
On Monday, I think.
No.
I don't have a copy of it.
The fixed price of $92,000, is that something that comes out of the grant?
Yes.
If it's awarded? I know the last time BB COG was in charge of doing this, did we pay a portion back then?
I don't know. You're talking about for the Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Yes.
I wasn't here at that time, so I'm not familiar with the history on that.
I'm here.
That was before I came to the county.
Okay. What is the timeline for this? How many months do they anticipate?
We set 12 months.
12 months?
From the beginning of the planning process until a plan is completed and submitted to the state for review. That does not necessarily mean the plan will be approved in 12 months, but we have a completed plan submitted of chance.
When they're reviewing the old plan, it's a rather lengthy process.
And this needs to be approved by when? Because it had a date.
It needs to be completed with...
December 17th, effective December 17, 2018.
It says, "Disagreement effective this 17th day of December 2018."
Right.
I don't know why the date is different on there. It should be for today's date.
I don't know that Atkins knew what our court date was when they submitted this to us, so I think a change of date would not be an issue.
Should be possible to do a pen and ink change on that.
Yeah. The issue I have, though, is if John C. hasn't had a chance to review.
Right. And he's out of town?
I won't say that. I will say, we knew he was not gonna be available this morning.
Okay.
So I believe he has court tomorrow.
And the other question I had on Exhibit B, I think it's the last page.
Okay.
It talks about the plan development and the six jurisdictions it'll cover, which is the City of Navasota, Bidas, Iola, Anderson, Plannersville, and Todd Mission. What about Richards?
Richards is not incorporated.
It's not incorporated.
Oh, okay. So it's based on incorporated areas? So it doesn't affect the unincorporated areas?
Well, they still can participate. In fact, we hope they would participate. Whitehall, Keith, Shiro, all those that are not incorporated, but still have a part to play in most of the... play, and most of them have their own fire departments. Yes, they will still play a role in the planning process. It's just they're not identified as jurisdictions because they're not incorporated.
So, we're paying for the jurisdictions?
Right.
But we hope that the other unincorporated areas-
They were in the previous one.
Okay. And for each one that we add, it's $5,000, but we're initially looking at $92,000? Jessica's standing behind you.
Come to the firing line, Ms. Herrera.
We were asking if John C. had had an opportunity to look at it?
It was sent to him. I don't know if he had an opportunity to look at it. I didn't get feedback.
You didn't get feedback?
No, really.
When did you get the contract?
Not till yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't think he would have had much time.
Okay. And they had the, they have the 17th day of December, so?
Today's Wednesday. I sent it yesterday in the morning. So, I got it at 5:00 on Monday.
On Monday, correct, right.
And it says the effective date is the 17th of December.
That's the date that they signed it and sent it over.
Okay. I was asking about the timeline. When does it need to be submitted back?
You can push it till next week if you need, you know, if we need more time to look at it, especially if John C. hasn't looked at it. I know it goes kind of with the item that was on the agenda last week, and it kind of puts it into writing, but it doesn't mean that you should rush to it and not look at it.
I would-
I know the sooner the better, but-
Yeah. You might consider, too, another option is to do a conditional approval today, conditioned on getting a response back from John that he has reviewed it, so that it doesn't have to wait till next week. That's just something I offer as a possible consideration.
Judge, I wouldn't agree with that, because I haven't, I'm just saying I would request the court additional time. I haven't reviewed it myself.
Sure. Okay. Well, we'll table it. Ms. Wagner, will you make sure that it's on the December 26th agenda?
Definitely lunch now.
Definitely lunch, on the 26th?
Yeah.
That agenda has grown for an end-of-year agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Lilly and Ms. Herrera. Is there anything else that you, Jessica, you want us to be aware of or consider from what you reviewed?
This contract was, I was expecting it on my desk very much later by Tuesday the previous week, and it didn't make it till this week, so that's kind of on the company.
Okay. Very good. We'll table, we'll take no action, we'll get it on the agenda.
No, I was waiting to see if they wanted me to send it to you guys, but I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, number seven, are you on doing that one also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Consider and adopt the Citizens' Participation Plan related to the Texas General Land Office Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. That's a heck of a name. Which goes to the CDBG-DR program. See attachment number seven. Your comment, sir?
Yes, this is, it doesn't, the wording's not in the item on the agenda, but this is a Hurricane Harvey block grant. And this part of it, this is one of the steps that needs to be done on these, to where we outline how the citizens are encouraged to participate in this process. This will include the, both the infrastructure funds that the county and the cities have been promised, supposed to come from the GLO through the COG, and also the buyout and acquisition funds. So, there will be an opportunity, in fact, we encourage the public to be involved in that process, especially with the buyout and acquisition. And I'm sure there'll be members of the public that will have many questions about that. So, this is basically establishing that to allow and ensure that we plan for those opportunities, whether it's public meetings, public hearings, whatever is required.
Is this restricted to LMI?
The infrastructure is. And I went to a GLO meeting on Monday down in Houston, and they talked about that, and they said, yes, it's 70% LMI. 70% or better. In fact, that wording is in here also. I thought I saw that in here.
I guess I skipped it, that was because I was looking for that.
Will these hearings be, or public notices or hearings happen all over the county?
We can look at that. I mean, we want to make sure that the public's encouraged to attend, so we don't want to limit participation by not having opportunities for them to attend. Let's say if we had it in Navasota and people on the north side of the county couldn't make that. So, I would encourage us to consider that we make multiple days or evenings available for the public to participate. At least, if nothing else, at least do one in Navasota. I would, just as a suggestion, have one meeting in Navasota, or meetings in Navasota and other meetings in maybe Iowa or Bidas.
And this is county-wide?
Yes.
This is county-wide, and this is for, it's a community block grant, and it's about the infrastructure, the buyouts of homes that were possibly damaged during Harvey, or the acquisition of-
Again, of homes that were affected by Harvey, yes.
Okay. So, is it repaired?
No, that's a separate program. That is a homeowner's assistance program, and that's not tied to this grant. The homeowner's assistance program is a separate pot of funds that the GLO has available, where residents can apply directly through the website. And I'm working to try and get some centers here in, at least one if not two in the county, kind of like we did with FEMA, so that people can actually sit down with GLO representatives and ask questions and go through that process. But for now, they can actually start that online and apply for assistance. That's for-
Or speak with you.
Yes.
Is it okay if we let them call you?
Right.
Which is what I've told people.
Yes.
So, this is for buyouts?
Yes, ma'am. Well, that's, there's actually, like I said, two parts of it.
Infrastructure and buyout.
Improvement and for buyout acquisition.
And David, on the buyouts, haven't we already been through the survey once or surveyed homes, and we've got a number?
I don't have a complete survey yet. I have reached out to some residents that I feel should consider the buyout.
Right.
And, and areas that were severely impacted where I believe that-
But that number's fairly minimal, is it not?
Yes, I'm counting less than 10.
Yeah.
And that, it also, it's tied to the eligibility. There's three key factors to determine eligibility for a resident, a homeowner. One is that obviously they have to own the home and the property. They have to have been impacted by Harvey and be able to show proof of that. So, in other words, if they, let's say, they pop up now and say, well, yeah, I got impacted by Harvey, but they never submitted a claim with FEMA, it doesn't mean they can't apply, but it's going to be much more difficult to verify their eligibility. Oh, and the third thing is they have, the home has to be in a defined flood zone.
Right.
Actually, it has to be in a zone A.
It has to be in a defined flood zone.
So, that, like I said, that really limits the number of residents that would be eligible for this, that were affected by Harvey.
Is this something like Ms. Ever Johnson was working on, where y'all were collecting information?
No, that's for a, that was for a separate mitigation grant, where we were surveying areas where we were trying to do mitigation projects in those, in those areas on County Road.
But your feedback as far as hearing from the public, you need the feedback in order to make the grant, does it, does it-
It's to make sure that we comply with the state and federal requirements on this grant.
And that people understand.
Give the public the opportunity to talk about it, to voice their concerns, to ask questions and so on. You know, this is, it's very much, we need the public engaged in this process. Same thing with the infrastructure, you know, when they want, you know, they want to know, well, why are you focusing on this area rather than our area, for instance? Well, again, this is an area that was affected by, again, it has to be an area that was impacted by Harvey, and, you know, it's, there's a lot of areas in the county that need assistance, we need to do mitigation on, but they weren't affected by Hurricane Harvey. So, but that's questions that the public may ask, and certainly are welcome to ask. And we want to encourage their participation in that process, that they're more aware of what we're doing and understand why we're doing it.
Well, then, if there aren't any other further questions, did you have some?
I've just got an observation. I've received a copy in English and Spanish. I'm just making an assumption that the Spanish portion says the same thing as the English portion.
That would be the assumption, too. I don't read Spanish.
I don't either.
But it is making sure that everyone understands, yes, that they can receive some sort of assistance, but their participation is needed. Because we do have areas that are in, right outside of the City of Navasota, in the unincorporated areas, that I'm sure that when Harvey out off of 421 came through, you know, they made the front page of the newspaper. They could not get to their homes. So, it's going to be vital that they understand that this information and their input is important. With that being said, if there aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and make my motion to adopt the Citizens' Participation Plan related to the Texas General Land Office Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery CDBG-DR Program.
Second.
For, probably for Harvey. Do we need to distinguish that?
That's what the grant program was encapsulated in, Harvey.
Well, there's, I mean, yeah, but I think we have different grants for that. I'm sure in the past ones we've had.
They use the same title every grant. It drives me up the wall. See, they're here, they're there.
That's a good comment. Are there any additional comments? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Seven, first by Commissioner, submitted by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Lilly, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Eight, Consider and Take Action Regarding the Burn Van and Authorized County Judge's Signatory. I would promote that we take no action. We had a rain again last night.
Raining out there now, Roger.
No action on Agenda Item Number Eight. Number Nine, Consider and Take Action to Appoint at Least Seven Residents of the County to Grimes County Historical Commission, GC, HC, to Serve a Term of Two Years Beginning January 2019. See Attachment Number Nine. I've talked to Joe King Foltz, who is the Chair of the Grimes County Historical Commission, and asked him for a list of those that were currently attending, participating, those that he believed would continue to participate, and are there any additional members? So, Joe King Foltz, Susan Boudreau, Vanessa Brzezinski, Bob Goldstein, Denise Upchurch, Sarah Nash, Hazel Weedman, Margaret Norwood, Betty Dunn, John Ray Maxwell, and Robin Montgomery are the current commission committee members, with the addition of myself, Joe Foulton, and also Al Peeler. So, that's the recommendation before you.
Judge, can I make a correction?
Yes, you may.
Margaret Norwood should be Margaret Bailey.
Huh.
Norwood is her former name. And just, they misspelled my name, but that's just a minor-
But you're used to that, aren't you?
You, Vanessa.
Yes.
Would you give us the correct spelling for you?
V-A-N-E-S-S-A. Last name is spelled correctly.
Oh, I was looking at the last name.
Yeah, they misspelled my first one.
Okay.
So, the, the, the motion is to point seven, but-
Well, the directive is you have to have a minimum of seven. You can have any number that you want, and the average within counties throughout the state of Texas is 19. So, this would give us 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. That would give us 13. And the issue we have currently in Grimes County, even though the previous 11 up there, because of conflict of schedules and health and what have you, it's been difficult for them to have a quorum. Matter of fact, I attended their December meeting along with Mr. Peeler, and there was only three, which did not represent a quorum, and therefore they weren't able to vote on anything. So, by having a few more citizens on that committee, then it might be easier for them to conduct business and have a quorum. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Did you want to be added to the committee?
No, no, I'm just, I was just, no, thank you.
We'll take this one, so we can get.
You know, they're, they're-
And one of the things, one of the things that the committee did talk about after the first of the year, let the holidays get past us, but then talked to Two Rivers, which is another historical group, and not pleasanter people, but to see if any of them would like to serve dual roles between the two committees. Or if the paper wanted to run a community service, need add that Grimes County is looking for those interested in the Historical Commission.
Yeah, we do have some people who have relocated to Grimes County that were formerly from Grimes County, who are historical lovers, you know, so they may want to participate, you know. I know the city annually does a, a, kind of push out to the community, would you like to be on this committee, you know, we'd appreciate your help, you know. So, there may be others that want to be on this committee.
And we had even talked about doing like a membership drive, you know, something, you know, invite the public and get people interested. We did it last year. We had a pretty good turnout.
So, again, we were required to have seven, a minimum of seven, but we're not limited to what our number could be.
So, today, will we be appointing 13?
Yes.
Okay.
On that list that we have on Attachment Number Nine. And since I am on the list, I won't vote.
Well, Judge, I know that we appoint the individuals listed on the list that you previously enumerated to the Grimes County Historical Commission to serve a term of two years beginning January of 2019.
My second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm sorry we got your first name wrong. That'll bring us to Agenda Item Number Ten, Rogue Bridge Engineer Harry Walker. Consideration and Possible Action Regarding Possible Sale of County Property on AFM 2445. Is expected the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, Deliberation Regarding Real Property.
Judge?
Ma'am?
County attorney said you could read both of those items, so they wanted to come out, come back in.
Okay. And also, Agenda Item Number Eleven is Discuss and Take Action on Possible Highway 90. Land Acquisition. It is expected the court will convene a closed or executive session regarding this item as authorized by Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, Deliberation Regarding Real Property. Mr. Walker, since it's under your title, is it your recommendation that we do go to Executive Action Committee?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. I would, we don't have legal, but I would ask that, Mr. Walker, that you stay, Ms. Nichols, you stay from a financial standpoint. And we're going to ask the rest of our audience to excuse themselves.
Ms.-
That ended at 11:21. We have discussed and taken no action on Agenda Item Number 11. We have discussed and taken no action on Agenda Item Number 10. Is there a motion on Agenda Item Number 12? I move we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 12 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Healthy discussion.
Have a Merry Christmas.